All right, I'll go ahead and call the Nottingham Planning Board Meeting for Wednesday, December 13th, 2023 to order. Before we begin, I'll have everybody introduce themselves.
Robert Davies, alternate.
Teresa Bascom.
John Moore.
Ian McKinnon.
Edward Veal.
Susan Mooney.
Charlene Anderson.
Larry Haney, SRPC.
And Mr. Davies will be seated and voting tonight for our vacant position. So, we're going to have a number of items on the agenda tonight. Some have had now requesting continuance since the agenda posted. But we'll take the thing, everything in order as it appears on the agenda. Just a reminder to everybody, if you did not when you came in, please sign in on the sign-in sheet just so we can record you in the minutes. And if we do open any public hearings, to the point where the public is invited to speak, they'll be at the front table and all comments will be directed towards the board, please. So, the first item on the agenda is a discussion with our Fire Chief Matt Curry and Gary Anderson, who's a fire department member regarding cisterns and dry hydrants, I believe. Thank you for being here tonight, I appreciate it.
How's everybody doing?
Good, how are you doing?
Back, Mr. Haney.
Good to see you. So, yeah, Matt asked me to get us on the agenda tonight, and I'll let him explain actually why, but around cistern stuff and so, and I think everybody has a copy of...
Of our current appendix.
Yeah, the appendix for around the cistern, fire cisterns. So, I'll let Matt just explain why we're here.
So, pretty much, just want to make, if this is what the town's going for, I mean, this is what I'm pushing every time they come to me and ask me what we need for a cistern. You know, this is the criteria, the whole layout of the cistern. I mean, if we're going to change the concrete, we're going to make that decision to change the concrete. That's all I'm here for. I just want to stop the...
Back and forth.
Cost of requests.
Everybody wants this or that.
Yeah.
I'm the bad guy, and it's just, this is what I'm going by.
Sure. And to back up a little bit on this, so, welcome, thank you for being here, nice to meet you in person. To back up, so when our subdivision regulations were updated, it was back when I think Paul Colby was still with us, and so this section, I believe, was drafted between Paul Colby and the fire chief. It's a lot of detail in here that us as a planning board generally aren't experts on, so we usually go out to either our town departments first, and then we can go to our town engineers, which is usually CMA. I've not reached out to them yet, trying to avoid any kind of costs, trying to see if we look at these in-house first, being in the town, before we push it to the engineering firm. So, when you get into like all these technical specifications, some of these come out of specific manuals that, you know, I don't think we have access to, but I don't know if it hadn't been an issue for quite a while, I'm guessing the price change, I'm guessing fiberglass got much more expensive at some point, because all of a sudden we started getting a big pushback on them.
Exactly.
Where we hadn't had a pushback before. So, we did a review of, Mr. Haney helped, you know, we reached out to some of the surrounding towns to see what they're doing. Are they doing poly, are they doing concrete, are they doing, you know, are they doing bonds, what are they doing for materials and performance and such, and are they seeing issues with it? Because that's another thing is, once these are installed, usually it becomes something the town is then responsible for maintaining.
By the time there's an issue, the town has it.
Right. Which means it is a problem, then that's a tax hit. So, we try to be cognizant of that, too. So, um, so, yeah, we're kind of looking for any kind of input that you may have or you want to provide, or if there's basically any big red flags to for one type of the other in practice.
We've had issues with concrete in the past, but that, there was only that one, you know, we haven't allowed them. And that kind of got slid in, wasn't done through the proper channels when that one was installed.
Okay.
That's why they stuck with this, you know, so everything was the same, same manholes on every single cistern in town, they're all set up the same, they're all hooked up the same, you know. We go to some, they don't have covers on them, you can't check, can't physically look at it and see if there's water in it.
Sure.
You know, it's just their different design.
Right.
So, that was the idea behind all this, from what I gather, but, I mean, and I have no problem saying, no, this is the way it's going to be, as long as that's the way it's going to be.
Sure. Yeah, no, it helps, sometimes we get some things where after a while, you know, board changes over everything, I think people aren't quite certain, like, well, why, why was it this way, is it this way? You know, it's trying to remember so that when applicants ask for it, you know, if they ask for a waiver for something from it, we can speak with it about it a little bit more intelligently from the town aspect of it, and we usually defer to the town departments for some things. So, fire for this, police for other things, road agent for some other items. But that feedback, I think, is pretty helpful if that continuity is there for access and types and whatever else versus, to have things, but I want to open up to the board, so.
Yeah, I think, I think what I've seen, too, is researching the surrounding towns and just from my own experience, is that they usually, and I think some of these towns references, is that they'll say, "The cistern tank may be constructed of cement, concrete, or fiberglass," but then specified it has to meet the NFPA 1142, which is kind of that governs the minimum requirements.
Right.
And the town can always say, "You want a bigger manhole," right? Because sometimes they say you only need like an 18 or 24-inch port, but the town can require 30 or something like that, say if it's, if it's concrete, so. It's also an availability thing, too. Like, I know the fiberglass, they only come from certain areas, so it's not like concrete where you can get them, well, Shea has them. Anywhere you are, you can get concrete sourced locally. I know it's been mentioned in the past, but like concrete, as long as you do have proper access, if there is an issue, you can actually get in those and repair. The problem with fiberglass is, it's a much more difficult process to do any repairs, especially once installed.
So, on that note, we have to remember, too, when you're talking about having to repair a cistern, probably at that point, we're looking at, that's a town, that's going to be a town cost.
Yeah.
And I think that's where all these details we're looking at here tonight came from, is, you know, trying to avoid cost of town 10 years, however long later, after, long after subdivisions put in and, you know, the developer's gone and now the town owns it.
Yeah, I look at it as, whether it's concrete or fiberglass, you can't guarantee something's not going to get weakened by the installation. You could have either thing, in 10 years, you're going to have an issue with either one, and then you look at the cost or the difficulty to repair. At that point, the town will be covered, is you're either looking at somebody that has a specialty knowledge of repairing fiberglass in a confined space, or repairing concrete in a confined space, and I think you'd be hard pressed to find somebody that thinks it's harder to find somebody that can repair concrete. So, there's, fiberglass is an art essentially, so. Some people prefer it, some people prefer fiberglass.
In 20 years, if you have to replace it and you put concrete, and it's going to be less expensive for the town to put a concrete one in than it is to go...
A third of the cost.
Than to go find a fiberglass one, when 20 years, we own these things anyways.
Right, and it's also important to note, too, that if for some reason...
You own them day one.
Exactly, but I'm saying, let's say in 20 years, you fail, it's all, they won't fail on day one, at least we can go after somebody if they do fail on day one, but...
To your point, if the townspeople choose in 10 years that they find some areas they feel that the town needs to put in cisterns, unrelated to a development, they're currently bound to put in fiberglass. Or some, the town has to ask for relief from that requirement, so.
Well, this strictly says subdivision.
Yeah. Yeah, but then I think if the town came in, I think the people would say, well, the only regulation to go to is that. So, I do think it's, I just think it would be beneficial to, and we can steal some of this language, these NFPA references are still accurate, to maybe allow both, in either scenario, we're still require, the plans have to be reviewed by you, and at that point, too, we always review, too, to see if it generally meets our typical detail, which we do have in the code.
I think, I wonder if there's some studies out there that show what the useful life is of the different materials used? I imagine there's got to be something somewhere out there that's, you know, looked at, is it concrete, or is it fiberglass, or is it, you know, and what affects the useful life of them? Because to me, that's what we'd want to lean towards, is whatever has the longevity.
That's a good question, so I don't think we've, I don't think we have any in town that are coming up to anywhere near the design life, so making that regs, the first one is, is that it has to be designed to last 50 years. So, I think oftentimes, on the sites I've visited, trying to find data on like, you know, has there been problems with failure of either one or type of the other, you'll often find companies that sell both, and they'll give you a pro and con on each, but both end up being a pro, because they're trying to sell both of them. But that standard is there, so I haven't seen, it's a good question, I haven't seen any studies yet, though, in practicality, or, you know, which ones have provided, you know, a longer useful life, you know, you have a design life, but...
I think the chief would also agree, but, and the comment about sprinkler systems, too, and as being alternative overall, so.
That was going to be a question, too, I wanted to bring up, because oftentimes, that's what we'll get, is, is in lieu of a cistern, the applicant asks, they said, "Well, I'm going to sprinkle houses instead," and we had a quick discussion about that last month. You know, there's a pro and con on that, too, the sprinklers are going to protect that one property, but they're not going to help us with any others that are in an area, so if you have areas that are more rural than others, or harder to get to, it's not really helping increase the fire capacity on that.
It's not much of a burden to a developer in that sense, because that cost just gets passed on to the person building the house, not from selling the land.
Don't sprinklers just work for a short duration, they aren't really...
Depends on what system you have.
Going to put out a fire, if the fires...
Well, the idea is that they turn on when the fire is small, so it doesn't build. I mean, ideally, yes, they put the fire out.
Is there a certain amount of gallons per minute that the sprinkler systems are pumping out? Because we're on wells.
They're not hooked to water, they have a tank.
It's pressure tank that's put in?
They have a tank in their house that's hooked into this system, and when it goes off, the tank, you know, and that's what runs it, it doesn't run.
What size gallon is that tank usually, do you know?
Three to 600, maybe? They're not, they're not large.
That's why I'm saying, I can't imagine them putting out a significant fire.
Essentially, it looks like another oil tank in your basement, it's a pressurized tank that sits in your basement.
It's fire suppression stuff, you know, the same, you know, it's like a, over a kitchen, like a commercial kitchen, it's, that's how it's set up.
Yeah.
And again, it's an NFPA, just, it's usually just a design, it's based on the size of your house, so many heads, and I'm sure it just backs into a certain number of sized tanks.
And then the maintenance goes on to the homeowner, it's not on the town to ever replace, ever repair, maintain, mow, plow, I mean, it's not, I get what you're saying, it's not helping out anybody else, but the idea is not to help out the rest of the roads, it's to help out, you know, the 1,000 feet in each direction of the development they're putting in.
Yeah, yeah, and sometimes, I guess, you know, cistern kind of is like an offsite exaction almost, it's where it's an improvement to an area that's not going to be owned by the property owner or the developer at that point. I could see possibility where we look at it twofold, with certain, depends on where the development is in town and how, what the access is, so if you have a part of town that's more accessible to our fire department, you know, a cistern might be right, or just a sprinkler system might be sufficient, but on other areas where the, it's well over five miles from the fire department, it could be even five, over five miles from Raymond, those are unprotected areas, so in that case, I could see being more stringent and requiring potentially, you know, whichever one is considered the better or required both.
In that situation, yeah.
It's like a road improvement, you know, well, the road didn't really need improvement, but because they're, you know, putting more houses on something, we may have to require a road to be upgraded to a certain standard to meet that demand, so it's, it's part of the development, but it's also impacts the access to the additional properties. So, I don't know if this is the case, so like Newmarket, I guess they switched to concrete, their reasoning for, I believe, was long-term durability, maybe where the water table is for them compared to ours, and all the water tables is close anyway, pretty much all of New Hampshire. And the problem with potentially the straps on the poly tanks degrading, I don't know if that's been improved since, since that time, or if we've run into that.
They haven't really changed the installation, usually you have to like, somebody does the calculations on the buoyancy, you still put concrete blocks usually to anchor the fiberglass with like steel straps over it.
Like dead net underneath.
Yeah, exactly, and then usually, so that's, that is one thing from a, usually you'll see, in a Google search will show you, people that say fiberglass is better is also the people that are in the industry or selling it, is that each of them does have a pro and a con, but in terms of fiberglass is a little trickier to install, because if it's not properly anchored, we've, I've seen them, they pop out of the ground. Concrete, just by itself, wait, you'd have a hard time finding a water table that made a concrete one pop out of the ground.
All right.
Did I have a question? Of course. With the, with regards to the one that did fail, the cement one, that kind of spurred a lot of this, with the way it failed, the design details that are in the regs, do they address whatever that issue was?
The one that failed was concrete.
Yeah, well, did it fail because it was concrete, or because, it sounded like to me the way you said it was, wasn't installed properly, so I'm wondering if what's required...
We don't, there was a time where I'm 90% sure it just ended up in, like, hey, the cistern's in, so nobody witnessed anything, we don't know what happened with it.
You just see pipes come out.
It didn't hold the water the way it was supposed to hold water, so it was a constant battle of filling this thing, sending people in to seal this thing, like, where's the water going?
Do you know which, where that was in town?
Strawberry lane.
Do you know, did the town end up covering that cost, do we know?
No, I think it was all on the builder.
Okay, that is my question, because that's a later thing, I think there's a, might be a bond or guarantee that they're looking for it to be released, so, so I want to make sure we understood that, if that was the, if that was something the town absorbed at the time, anyway.
I know there's some language, I think it says "lees," where they do mention bonding of the road, but also including the tier maintenance bond if the road is accepted, so.
Yeah.
There's that, too, but...
So, I think what I'm hearing is, is it still is preferred for the town, for the cisterns, when they're going to go in to be poly, fiberglass poly with these requirements and/or sprinklers for individual units?
I mean, if today's, if it shows today that the concrete ones are just as well, like, I don't have a problem personally with either, either way. Like, you said, there's pros and cons of all of them, but either way, the last guy's going to get mad.
Right.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do, I do understand that.
That's where we're at.
Yeah, so, and this is just, I'm glad you came in, because we're looking at updating our subdivision site plan review regulations at some point early next year, so...
This 30,000 gallons of water we put in it, I hope this 30,000 gallons when we need it.
That is, that is the goal.
Pretty simple. That's it.
That's where I think maybe we just look and see and make sure we expand, that like, if there is a case where somebody says, oh, it's in, but we already, and we actually say in our requirements, you know, certain milestones that have to be inspected, and they call you and say, well, it's in, it's like, well, sorry, you're going to have to dig it back up, because you didn't, you didn't notify us and you didn't follow the requirements, and they can't get mad at you, because it's spelled out. So, there's always that, and maybe there's stuff that we expand, but...
And that's Colin, I'm sure he came. See if he's going to have the building inspector with wiring and things like that.
Yeah, I've seen people have to pull up pavement and loan, because they'd approve they have the right gravel and sand under a road.
Well, that's more expensive than, the more expensive cistern.
Yeah.
May I ask a question?
Of course.
Mr. Curry, this is a very interesting location for Nottingham. What is your take as fire chief to be the better model for the development? A cistern that would assist other people in the area, or sprinklers for the new houses?
So, a cistern in the area, we, we would use it for initial attack, right? If we had a fire and there was, the closest cistern is the one we're going to hit, but then we're moving, because that cistern has to be refilled, they don't refill on their own, so it's just more work. They're there for a purpose, they serve a purpose, but we try to use them as little as possible. I mean, if a sprinkler's going to put the fire out, it's a pretty good deal.
But they don't assist the other people that already live there?
True.
Yeah.
But at that point, you're putting the burden of this bill on to the builder for everybody else that lives on the road already, in roundabout way, you know? If they want to put in sprinklers, I would let them put in sprinklers.
Well, and that's, yeah, and that's, it's like, well, if the development wasn't coming forward, those people would just continue to live without that water resource there, so it's that balance of trying to be like, well...
Technically, they have already lived without it there, because it wasn't there before.
Yeah, one of them, I mean, everything's lakefront, that they're, you know, that they're saying it's going to benefit everybody else on the road, and my God, I think nine out of 10 of them are on the water.
Yeah, and one of those burned down a couple of years ago.
They do, I mean, any house anywhere will burn, doesn't matter how much water's around it, they're going to get there.
Yep.
I have one more question. When a fiberglass unit fails, what happens to the fiberglass? Does it end up in a landfill?
I have no idea, we've never had one fail in Nottingham.
We don't have that many, though.
Well, what about the material, is it recyclable, fiberglass?
About the same as a windmill blade, right?
Supposedly, did they have a technology that could recycle them, but fiberglass isn't a recyclable.
Yeah, exactly.
It's not a recyclable material.
In 20 years, there might be a whole nother thing out there for types of cisterns that go in.
Right.
So, I mean, so what might upgrade, you know, we might not be talking about concrete or fiberglass anymore, there might be something else that's more...
Or all houses will need sprinkler systems.
Yeah.
Yeah?
No, I think it's great, again, I think it's a great discussion, because it helps us to re, to understand again, as a board, you know, why are we asking for things, why do we ask for some specifically? I don't know where they are. And that way, when we do get waiver requests, it just makes us more educated to be able to speak towards that, so.
There's dry and there's filled.
And we'll continue the, you know, what we usually do on any new applications, we always start to send those out to the town departments, yourself included, just for to provide an opportunity for you to provide input on it, we always welcome it, you're always welcome to come in and be a part, I'm sure your schedule is very busy, busy as well, so, in writing, it's always fine, too. But does anybody else have any questions? Do you have any else?
I think so.
No, I really appreciate you both coming in tonight, it was really helpful, and I like you for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Good to see you, Gary, nice to meet you.
All right, first public hearing is a continued case, case number 23004 S U B, residence is at Fort Hill, Smoke Street and Fort Hill Road, application from Berry Surveying and Engineering on behalf of Owl Ridge Builders requesting a 25-lot open space subdivision. So, we've already accepted this case as complete, already acted on a number of waivers and conditional use permits, the applicant, I believe, was going back to revised plans based on some order input, and they have since requested a continuance to the second meeting in January, which would be on Wednesday, January 24th, 2024. Alana was kind enough to put together a history for me of where we were on this, just to bring everybody back up to speed. So, it's a major subdivision, so I believe these dates are right, because I trust Alana. April 26th of this year is when we originally had the application brought to us and accepted it as complete, and at that point, it was continued for a site walk, which was completed May 17th, follow-up to site walk on May 24th, June 28th, we'd sent it out also, it's at one point during there, that we sent it out to our third-party engineering CMA, June 28th, we reviewed response from that, which I believe was CMA's response. We had requested continuance in July, and then September, second meeting was September, we had new plans, or updated plans provided to us, that's when we acted on waivers and conditional use permits. Our meeting on October 25th, which was when it was continued to, was postponed, and since then, we've had the continuance request from November 8th, and then, which was continued to tonight, and then again, request from tonight to January 24th. Alana, when the applicant sent in their request, did they submit any other, like, verbiage with it as to what, what it is, and have they submitted any new materials or anything else in between?
And I wasn't able to make that September 27th meeting, but I know I'd submitted some comment on the CUPs and waivers. Did we get through all of those, whether we acted on, said yes or no?
We did.
So, it's basically, so that, it's down to final discussion and approval or disapproval of the project.
And they met with the zoning board for their request?
In between there, correct.
Right.
In between these meetings, somewhere in between that timeframe, they had gone to zoning for variants, which was, I believe, some of the requests to continuance in between June and...
It was the larger lot in the rear, and then some of the frontage or something, I think, or zoning.
I tried to write a couple of things. I'm forgetting notes again, this is what... Do we know the 920, because again, it wasn't, did those 927 plans address the CMA comments fully? Because I know that was part of the previous continuance, as we were trying to catch up and...
They addressed a lot.
I don't think they got the CMA notes really till July, so...
Yes, they addressed a lot of that, or they withdrew some of the waivers, specifically like curbing or reverse curves and...
Yeah, I know they did some of the curbing on the slopes.
So, if I followed you correctly, this would be, this is the second request in a row for continuance, right? If I followed what you said correctly.
Correct, we had originally continued it September 27th into October, but that meeting was postponed, so we...
They were pushed in November.
Right, so September, we, applicant was before us, we continued it to the second meeting in October, which ended up being in November, at that point, they requested continuance, and now they're requesting continuance to tonight, and then they're requesting continuance from tonight to January.
That's three.
So...
Well, we continued it, and we continued it at the end of September.
To October.
To October, which the applicant then requested to be continued.
To November.
To today.
So, they skipped over an entire month?
We did.
We didn't have a meeting for a month.
October, we had the first meeting, but they were on the second one.
We did a date certain and just skipped a month, like, we made the decision to just put them here instead of...
No, they were continued to, they were continued to a meeting in October, which we didn't have, so that, we didn't have a forum, so that pushed it to November.
But they were going to continue.
They were going to ask for it, yeah.
Yeah.
So, this is just the second continuance that they've requested in a row.
Well, it sounds like...
So, January 24th it is, right?
Yeah, so it sounds like they're hopefully just trying to get through those final comments. I know there was a number of state permits, so I wouldn't be surprised if they're working on the state permits.
Yeah, so I think if we continued it, we continue it and request that any further continuation, they come and meet with us, like we've done before with other applicants.
Whether they need another one or not, we would like somebody here on the 24th to just update.
Right.
Or some narrative, something to provide.
Yeah, that's fine.
As to what's being worked on.
Just something more than just a request.
Yeah.
It is more common for applicants, so for the public that's here, it's more common for cases to request continuances when the more complex a case is, this is a 25-lot subdivision with, with a lot of review and items that have gone back and forth with our engineering firm and the applicant, and discussion from the board, and also getting a variance from, or variances from the zoning board, so. So, is there any further discussion from anybody?
No, I'll make a motion to continue case number 23-004 S U B, residence is at Fort Hill, to our January 24th meeting at 7:00 PM in this room.
A second?
So, it's a second by Mr. McKinnon, second by Ms. Mooney, to continue the case 23004 to January 24th, 2024, at 7:00 PM. Any further discussion?
The only thing is, if, if Alana, if you send them notice just to say, yep, we are approved, can you just mention to Chris, just to, either in person or via email, provide an update if there is going to be a further delay?
Any further discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries 7-0. Next item on the agenda is case 23008 S I T, Clark, 55 O'Kroles Road, this was an application from Arberry Clark for a site plan review to run small wood processing business on the property. We originally, I don't have the dates for this one, we had accepted the application as complete, applicant asked for some more time to think of other next steps, we continued it to tonight and requested that they make a final decision or update us, and applicant has since requested that they withdraw the application. So, so the board can act on this a different, number of different ways, but normally, or But normally, or one of the options is to make a motion to accept the withdrawal of the application without prejudice.
Make a motion that we withdraw or approve the request to withdraw the application for case number twenty-three dash zero zero eight S I T. without prejudice.
A second?
So it's a motion by Mr. McKinnon, a second by Ms. Mooney to approve the request to withdraw the application without prejudice, is there any discussion on that from the board?
I've noticed that they're still, it looks as though they're still doing quite a bit of woodworking, storage and stuff on that property, just so you know.
Yeah.
That wasn't, the, the case was the fact that he wanted to store his paving trucks and use it as his home base. I thought that was the whole purpose and we said you couldn't keep it as a business.
What are you saying, he is operating it as a different business?
The language of the application, well, according to the notice, is that to run a small wood processing business on a property, which does not currently have a dwelling on it. So it's proposing a commercial use on a residential property, which also doesn't have a building on it, so it's not an accessory use, like a, it's a primary, it's a primary use. So that'd be something, I think we, that'd be something for the code, building inspector, code enforcement to potentially look into. I think it's beyond our purview, but if we take final action on this tonight, I can follow up the building inspector on that.
Well, that's why I brought it up, because it doesn't, it's not affecting me, but I thought that that we hadn't settled that decision at all, which is why I bring it up, because I go, I go down McCulloughs all the time.
So we have a motion and a second, any further discussion on that one? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, that motion also carries seven zero. Next item on the agenda is a continued case twenty-three zero zero nine S U B. White, fifty-nine Whites Grove Road. Application from Scott Boudreaux, Boudreaux Land Surveying on behalf of Jonathan White, requesting planning board approval of a two-lot residential subdivision. Property is located at fifty-nine Whites Grove Road in Nottingham, identified as tax map sixty-three lot forty-seven dash five. So we accepted this application as completes at the November eighth meeting, I believe. We also deemed it not a regional impact, I believe, at that same time. And then, and then there was discussion with the applicant and some requested changes and. Come on up, anybody here for this today? If you could just identify yourself and just give us an update as to where things are. Everybody should have received updated plans on this as well.
Okay, my name's Scott Boudreaux, Boudreaux Land Surveying. Back with a modified subdivision plan for fifty-nine Whites Grove Road. Last meeting. Didn't have enough upland buildable, continuous buildable upland, so I modified the boundary line, the proposed boundary line. To include that, it excludes the twenty-five percent slopes and greater, it also excludes the building setback line. So it actually is a buildable upland at this point, and it also excluded that overhead power easement. So the proposed existing, well, the existing lot that's going to be the separate lot here, has the required continuous upland behind the wetland where the house already exists. And we just modified the proposed boundary line in the back.
Thank you. Bring it back to the board, so we obviously had some comments at the last, last meeting, but does anybody have any comments, questions regarding the updated plans that we have before us now?
I took a look, addressed all the comments I had, so I don't think I have anything to add.
Again, one of those, one of those requests was that to show that, that the parent lot, which already has a dwelling on it, still would have a thirty thousand square foot contiguous area on it, that area in the back isn't meant to show that, that they're actually going to build back there. It's just to show that the, the parent parcel still would meet our zoning definition. So we wouldn't be creating, we wouldn't be making a non-conforming lot, more of a non-conforming or be creating a non-conforming lot in this process. And so you had indicated that the proposed lot forty-seven dash five dash one, so it's obviously hard to sometimes read where the, the lines are, but that contiguous area, that's, that's the contiguous uplands that's mentioned. You said that is exclusive of the steep slopes and the overhead easement. And it is contiguous, it's not counting any land that's on this side of the easement, meaning the one for the six side. Is that correct?
It is correct, it's contiguous, doesn't include anything on the roadside of that easement. It excludes the twenty-five percent and greater slopes. It goes, we can't, it's hard to see, but it goes right around that building setback envelope and it goes around those hatched areas that show the twenty-five percent slopes.
Are these the upland slopes that you're talking about? Because this isn't on the old plan at all.
Right, that's the twenty-five percent slope that didn't show last time.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? If not, I'll go ahead and, so the public hearing was continued, so I'm going to go, go ahead and reopen the public hearing since we do have updated plans. So anybody that would like to speak for, against, or just ask questions about the application for the public, you're welcome to come on up. As I said, you come up to the table and address your comments towards the board, please. Seeing a lot of head shaking now. So, once and twice. All right, public hearing was open at seven thirty-four and closed at seven thirty-five. That brings it back to the board. For any further discussion, Mr. McKinnon, if you've got anything new for, for this, you know, you've already done an original review. We had our comments and it looks like they made their adjustments based on what our comments were.
Yeah, it looks like it, it looks like there's proposed pins north eastern boundary, as opposed to, there was only one before, so it falls within our guidelines of being every three hundred feet. And then he made two notes, two additional notes, thirteen and fourteen about the lots fall within two, neither, neither of the proposed lots fall within the two hundred fifty foot shoreline protection. And then just talking about the access easement over the existing driveway for the budding neighbor that's not a part of this, so. It does seem like everything is been addressed from the board, in addition to the things that were mentioned about lot shape and steep slopes and stuff like that.
Thank you. No other discussion from the board, I guess at this point, a motion to approve would, to, to, a motion, a final motion would be in order. We do have conditions of approval listed in the, in the staff's review on the back. So if we were to prove it, we draw our, kind of our standard items, which is plan copies, price, seal, signatures, original mile R. Electronic submission, copies paid, additional items that would be determined by us, which are usually monument set. Anything from, any permits received from like D O T. and such and other entities?
I'll make a motion to approve case number twenty-three dash zero zero nine S U B. Fifty-nine Whites Grove Road, as presented with our standard conditions of approval. To note, I believe the only, the other state permits that would be required would be state subdivision and D O T. approval, just to recognize the new residential access. And then obviously our standard conditions related to fees and monumentation and final plans.
Second?
So it's a motion by Mr. McKinnon and a second by Mrs. Bascom, any further discussion by the board? If there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, that motion carries seven zero. Thank you, thank you so much. Next item on our agenda is a conceptual application for, it's number twenty-three dash zero zero five, oh. Can we restart the numbering on the conceptials? Pearson, Kennison Pond Road, applicant is looking to purchase twenty-two acres to subdivide into four lots. Property is identified as tax map thirty-two lot four. And as a reminder to the public and applicants, so a conceptual is completely non-binding, it's optional for applicants, it can be encouraged. It's a way, especially before people spend, invest money on a plan and engineering and all that, that they that they are able to come in and, and talk to us. Non-binding and again, so it's higher level, it's not engineered plans, it's, it's a, it's just a kind of informal discussion to help guide, guide individuals. So welcome, if you could just identify yourselves and say what you're looking to do and we can go from there.
Hi, my name's Courtney Reader and this is my brother Ryan Pearson. We're here talking on behalf of our parents, Dan and Janina, who are out of town. They're looking to buy some land because our family is really close and we were looking to have housing that we can all afford close to one another. So we're really interested in this property that we found in Nottingham that has, I think it's twenty-two acres. And we just want to know if it would be possible to split that lot into four different lots for four different houses. And what we would need to do to do that.
Okay, sure. No, it's fine, again, oftentimes we get people that, you know, have never been before, and they just board, it's a new process. So that's kind of why these processes are here, is to try to take away some of the, the question and, and everything and.
Which in the right direction.
Yeah, we're here, we're here every month a couple of times, so it's a, but this is what this process is for, so, so welcome. So let, any from, from the board speak first as to any thoughts, comments, concerns as to applicant's plan. We do have a kind of a copy of like a tax map of the parcel, so it's the, there's a smaller parcel, one acre lot, that's not part of this, correct?
Yes, the owner's keeping that, that's where their house is.
So it's the other piece that's kind of bisected by what is currently labeled as Kennison Pond Road.
So. First question, is Kennison Pond Road a town road?
It's a private road.
Okay, there's your.
So basically it's a driveway.
It's a driveway.
And there's already two establishments on the driveway.
Well, the one lot that's there and the one that sits way out back next to the pond.
Right, but that's all you can have on a driveway, is two, is.
Three, well.
Two.
If it's considered a private road, you can have up to three. So I guess I'm not sure, we'd have to know for sure if it's considered a driveway or a private road.
It's listed in our subdivision regs in the appendix as a private road, I did not go further than that, looking at any kind of history of Kennison Pond Road or or whatever, other than what we have at, in our.
You have a drawing of this, because I don't.
Things. So for, I believe, I don't know, the discussion. So I believe any, for two residences, it can be considered a shared driveway. Three or more is considered a private road, would be a road or a private road, but we've been advised in the past that more than two is considered, is not a shared driveway, it's a, so.
But if they put four plus the two that are there, that's total six lots, that's a subdivision.
Well, it's a subdivision.
Subdivision either way, but yeah.
Right, so still, so I mean, you're really, they're looking at subdivision regs in order to upgrade that road, to make it a road, to do everything. You can't just cut.
Potentially, right.
So literally, I mean, it's, your project is definitely doable, but it's going to be costly.
One thing that my dad was asking about was, would we have to like upgrade like the whole road, or would we have to do like a hundred or two hundred feet of the road, or like what is the requirements there?
If that were to be required, is private a subdivision, it's generally at least, it, it's going to be up to the board, but if there's nothing, I don't know if there's anything beyond that, this lot for a house, I think there's a house.
There's a, a house, a house that's been approved that sits on Kennison Bond.
Okay.
And it's the only access to it is on this road.
So there's.
So you literally have to go to the end of the property line of this and let him take from where his property at this property end, this twenty-two acres tops, right?
So improve. Right, improvement could look like, oftentimes it's a stretch, at least fronting the properties that are on it. But then also some kind of turnaround for emergency vehicles gets a dead end road, so, you know, how do they, so sometimes there's like a lollipop or something added at the end.
So in terms of, if you guys want to view some of the details related to private roads, so within our subdivision regulations, which is a PDF on, on the website, it's section fifteen point four. It's page sixty-three on the version I have, it might have updated since, but either it's still fifteen point four, it's fifteen point four is private roads. And it covers some of the requirements and how there has to be an association that covers it, usually associated with the road, the homes that have frontage on it. And so here, one of the things, number one under it is, private roads servicing three or more lots or units shall conform to the standards of this article, since residents on private roads as taxpayers are entitled to the same quality as a town-accepted road. And since at some future date, taxpayers may petition, so basically saying it needs to be built to a town standard. We have had cases in the past where some people have requested waivers from certain elements of our road standards. So when it says on built to the same quality or conformed to the standards of this article, elsewhere in those regulations, it goes through like minimum width, construction requirements, there's a lot of, a lot of detail as to, and there's some typical cross-sections as well. And so it's essentially saying three or more lots, which right now, believe if you look at the tax map, it's technically three lots are, there's only two residences, right? But three lots that technically are on it. But if a, if you were to look to further subdivide the property, so it's kind of like a non-conforming situation right now. If you came in to further subdivide land, additional lots, the first thing we would go to is, okay, what is required under this private road standard? And so I believe we don't have any, like, so it could remain a private road, but it would have to be built to a town standard unless there's certain waivers requested from some of the design requirements. Which has been a hot topic in many, over the years, as to the condition of roads the town has, has accepted. So it's probably that this board, and I think many departments are going to be hesitant to waive much in the sense of the requirements. And it's probably the type of thing that an engineer or surveyor is going to have to, based on breaking out those lots, you would determine how far that road would need to go. But I think somebody said realistically, you probably would have to deem it a private road, built under the standard to the end of this parcel. And then lot five, the parcel down on Kennison Pond, would essentially have a driveway off the end of that road. I think legally, you could say put a cul-de-sac in the middle of this and have land that goes around, but then you have the issue that driveway to lot five needing easements and all that across, and then I think I would worry that we're getting into like backlot scenarios and no frontage, that kind of thing.
Well, the, the frontage is a question too, so.
Right.
So this, any kind of, any kind of development, even in a single house on this, is going to end up needing is going to end up needing zoning relief, because there's no, there's no frontage on a town road or a classified or better road. So it's a private road, so the way our regulations read for zoning, so that we have zoning regulations which are very strict. The relief from those is a variance from, from the Z B A, zoning board of adjustment, sorry, or depends on what the criteria is. Whereas in the subdivision regulations and site plan regulations, those are a little, there's a lot of things in there that waivers can be requested from, it's still up to the board on whether they're granted or not. But there's, it, it's contained at this board and, but zoning is very, the zoning regulations are more strict. So that's why it goes to the zoning board, a separate board for relief. So any kind of development on a private road is going to end up needing relief regardless of it's one lot or, you know, a subdivision and multiple lots. So there's going to be a step there regardless. You can get into other issues where, you know, looking at the, the map, you know, where, where some of these become, they're not paper streets because they're, they're there, but whether or not the road is actually where it was laid out and planned, so if there's any kind of survey of that road. I don't know when Kennison Pond Road became a thing. I know it's, seems like it's really hard to see from one fifty-two, because I didn't really realize it was there. I thought it was a driveway or just a trail. But on that curve on one fifty-two, so you might also run into state state driveway permits or state road, because it, the town doesn't control any access onto state roads. So any, any access that's going to be granted from one fifty-two, one fifty-six, route four, one twenty-five, the state, the D O T. has a say in that. So it could be that it's fine, but that's another, it's, it's another step.
An enhanced D O T. driveway permit. It's an increase in, it's an increase in vehicle traffic. It's an increase in, it's an increase in vehicle traffic because of residential, so it does require a permit.
In my opinion, if you're looking, and your family's looking at doing the four.
Yeah.
You should actually go see an engineering company that actually does it, because you are looking at a subdivision. There's, as we talk right now, and all the information we're giving you, is most likely something that, I don't know what your, your level of, of knowledge is on this, or your parents' level of knowledge, or any of this.
Parents, for sure.
Well, it's, it's very complex.
Well, it's a.
Because your situation is very unique. So you definitely probably would like to, if, if this is some way you wanted to pursue. An engineering, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, because we can give you so much information, but this isn't something that, of what you're looking to do, I would feel comfortable for you and your family trying to do by yourself.
Yeah, well, and, and even to subdivide, you have to have it surveyed by a surveyor. Either ser- surveyor can do a subdivision, breaking out land, but when we start talking about technically you need to upgrade the road to some capacity, that now goes to an engineer. So now you're into, you're hiring two firms or a firm that does both.
And then you need to interpret our zoning ordinances and our ordinances, you better have one of them too. Because even, no offense to it, but it's gotten big and it's complex.
Yeah.
There's so many different things in there.
And so there's a due diligence, I mean, you can, most firms, if you, if you do call an engineering and/or surveying firm, if you mention you're looking at a piece of land, oftentimes you can ask that you're looking for some due diligence on, is it feasible to subdivide and develop? And hopefully with these notes, you can kind of tell them that, you know, we've addressed some concerns on private roads and, um, via the roadway standards too, there's certain requirements where this has kind of a grandfathered right-of-way to get back there. I can't tell from the GIS how wide that is, but it actually necks down, it looks like. Well, it says it only has forty-five feet of frontage on one fifty-two, and it actually gets narrower than that. Our minimum is, uh, generally fifty feet for a right-of-way, but yet we also have requirements for vegetated buffering to adjacent lots on new roads, so.
But if this, where we ran to before, if it's an existing, considered an existing road, because it's a paper road or whatever, that, that, I think.
Yeah, and that's a question of the, was it actually, well, to your point, was it laid out as a road or did it just become a road, a driveway that became a road?
What?
All questions that a surveyor and engineer will be able to research.
But with that, to Mr. McKinnon's point though, where the neck of it, on what, what axis is one fifty-two, it's very, it's, it's, it's narrower than what the normal standard would be for a right-of-way or even potentially a driveway. So you might not be able to get curbing in there in the turning sides. And if you stay with four lots, four proposed lots, that's a major subdivision. So if you look at our subdivision regs, we have two minor subdivisions, three lots or fewer. So that means how many total lots end up. Major subdivisions, four or more, so you end up, you end up more stringent, more requirements for a major subdivision.
We'd be in that anyways though, because it's already three.
Correct, so even the creation of one more lot would.
No, it's not already three.
No, it's at three right now, on that road.
Yep.
But I'm saying.
Pick it up pretty good, I gotta say.
Well, because it's technically not a town road. No, but I'm sorry, but for, for what we consider a major subdivision or minor subdivision, is the actual parcel that you're controlling. How many lots are becoming out of it? So if you stay at three and fewer, you fall into our minor subdivision regulations. We can still require more stringent stuff. It's always at the, will the board? But when you get to four or more, you fall into a major subdivision, and there's gonna be more, right, more check boxes that you have to go through. So, you know, it might be to look at the, the two different standards and say, okay, and, and then, if you do talk to an engineer, they say, well, there's, given the site conditions and the way this goes like this, you know, realistically it could be a three anyway, so. It, it's a financial decision and everything else, I understand that. Um, but that's another thing to kind of consider as you look to potentially, to potentially get some of this. Looking at the town historic cemetery map, and oftentimes these dots are wrong, it's showing, there might be a cemetery at the back corner of.
It's also showing wetlands on that corner too.
Which, yeah, which might be wetlands as well. Um, so sometimes the wetlands drawings are, are broad on maps. And that's why they always go to, to, um, but a wetland scientist, if, if wetlands are present, would be involved as well, as well as like a, a surveyor. But in the back.
They would coordinate that, yeah.
The back left corner, I guess, which would be the western, uh, westernmost corner. That dot might be a cemetery there. I don't know if that's, is that a known, if it's present, showing. Some of those are hard to find, and they may not be in the right spot on our town maps. But we have some individuals in the Historic Society that have been really enlightening on some of that information. Oftentimes they'll have photos too, because sometimes they're just field stones, and you would never know that that's what that is. It might not be an area that you're even looking at developing, um, but if you are, you know, it's an area that, that you might begin to, knowing where that is. Nobody wants to accidentally dig into something like that.
And just so you know, all, this is being filmed right now or recorded, and it will be up on Nottingham, um, has a YouTube page. Usually what it takes a couple of days before it gets uploaded, so your parents can go, you can go in and listen, so. Because I know there's a lot being thrown at you, so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, any other, anything else from the board? Any other guidance, questions?
No, I don't think so. I think it's just unfortunate, it's when you're doing multiple lots, you're into surveyors and engineers figuring it out, because ultimately they gotta stamp plans that kind of create those lines anyway.
And there may be other options, rather than four different lots, you do like a townhouse type thing or.
Duplex, yeah.
Instead of doing four separate homes, but I think it's great that y'all want to stay close together. I think that's really, it's really super.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. So we have a couple other items of business. Um, we have a development of regional impact notification from the town of Raymond. This, I can't remember if this went out, there's been a lot of stuff.
I was looking for an email, but I know.
But if not, if, if, so we got a notice from, a regional impact notice was declared by town of Raymond, so boards as, planning boards especially, when they're reviewing subdivision site plan applications, they can declare something of a development of regional impact, which gives a butter status to, um, whoever they determine. And allows us to provide comment. It's non-binding, um, but we are, it, it allows us to provide comment back to the board for them to consider whenever they're next hearing the application. So the next meeting on this will be on, or will be on Thursday, January fourth, two thousand twenty-four, for the town of Raymond, at six PM. In their media center at Raymond High School on forty-five Harriman Hill Road. And this was found, um, on November sixteen, twenty twenty-three, is when they declared a development of regional impact. So the application is number, for their application number is twenty twenty-one zero one eight White Rock Place. It's a site plan application submitted by Joseph Coronati of Jones Beach Engineers. On behalf of Tuck Realty Corp, the applicant is proposing a hundred and fifty-six, uh, market rate apartments on three, of three, four-story buildings on slabs with elevators, a mixture of one and two bedroom units, uh, with open space preserved, recreational trails, associate parking, access will be from nor-, uh, I'm sorry, from Main Street. And it identifies Raymond tax map twenty-three, lots twenty-five, twenty-nine, and twenty-nine, located at one oh nine A and C, Main Street, Raymond. And it was within zone B and D of their, um, industrial district.
Um, I will say, I'll technically have to recuse myself from any conversation on this. This is a project out of my office.
Sure.
It's what?
It's a project from my office.
Oh, okay.
But.
Where, where is this in Raymond and why are they saying, because it's off one fifty-six that it's gonna impact of?
No, it's a hundred and fifty-six units that they're proposing.
Hundred and fifty-six units and it's off, it's on Main Street? So when, when you come down one fifty-six, if you were to take a right and then go down, and then you take the, you take the left to go on to Main Street, it's still off of that. So there's gonna be traffic coming from Main Street up twenty-seven where it intersects with one fifty-six.
So it's gonna impact people coming off of one fifty-six going into Raymond?
Which is already not much fun.
No, I know, not much fun at all.
No.
And if we have, we've got that, the total of those eleven. That eleven, subdivision, right?
Potential, yeah.
Yeah.
They're talking about traffic on one fifty-six.
I thi- I think we should definitely chime in that, uh, the, the traffic congestion on that intersection. And I, I looked, so DOT has a monitor down by, uh, the one fifty-six, twenty-seven. And it's just, traffic has continuously increased since two thousand and eighteen, except for the year of COVID.
Right, we all see it.
Yeah, yeah. And what was also interesting in just looking at this is DES has a proposed a probation on any new water systems in Raymond, because they have a violation, and they're still working through that. So I was surprised to see that the planning board in Raymond kind of like didn't mention that in this impact study, because like.
How can you build apartments without water?
Yeah, DES is saying no new projects.
Epping and Raymond are currently under moratorium.
Yeah, it's like.
You can gain approvals, you just will not get your state permits, which then you can't pull a permit to do the work, but you can obtain approvals. As long as there's not a moratorium on the use that you're proposing, you can still obtain an approval, but you just don't know when they'll allow new water connections.
Wow.
So currently Epping and Raymond are both under.
Which makes it worse for Nottingham, because that means they're gonna come here.
They're actually, they're both working on it, it's just, there's no timeline on it. Because they're actually legally required by the state to provide a plan. I think actually, Epping has until June of next year to have a actual concrete plan in place to fix their sewer treatment issues. Raymond's in the same boat.
Just a plan, doesn't mean they have to be doing, working on it?
They have to have, there's a certain level of commitment.
Okay, because you can also.
I've heard the budget meetings in Epping have been pretty long, trying to figure out how to pave the road.
Yeah. Because they have a whole water commission down and stuff. I think the other thing too, that I just, um, concerns me is just, and I went in to look at Raymond's lighting ordinance, and it's pretty vague, but I, I would, I would just like to comment if, uh, in a letter to them that we request that all lighting be downlighting. Because the way that Raymond is now is.
Lights up the sky.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, I, I've seen it, seen it. Northwood used to have a really good lighting ordinance, and they changed that, and we used to see more, we used to see more stars on Gallen Road than we used to see on Pataque Way Lake when we moved. And now, after Northwood abolished their other lighting ordinance and let everything go.
The traffic circle gives us a lot of bleachers now.
Yeah.
So there, when they took their vote on the regional impacts, we get a copy of the minutes. So they went through the criteria, the different items, school impact, they had a vote as yes. Traffic generation had a, um, apparently, traffic generation was a vote of three to three, which they consider as a yes. Road networks. Was a yes. Building size is proposed building greater than five thousand square feet, located within a twenty-five hundred feet municipal line. That must be their own, um, their own criteria. But they have, but they had as no as visual impacts, they had no pollution. They had discussed and said, yes, is, is an option. Water supply impacts, they had as no. Because it will not require major wetland permit from, uh, NHDS. And does not require large groundwater withdrawal permitting, um, or another community's municipal water supply, those were no's. Conservation lands, no economic impacts, says no, emergency response, yes for fire and police.
Yeah, I think that's the other thing we should chime in on too, because municipal aid is gonna impact.
Yeah. So some of, again, when we look at this one application or this one case that we're allowed to chime in on, we had a few others that they declared development of regional impacts in the last year. There's two very large commercial properties. One was off of twenty-seven, I believe, and, uh, our comments basically were similar, you know, light, um, environmental concerns, but also specifically was concerned over traffic coming through the town and the intersection of one fifty-six, twenty-seven. That's already, seems to be reported by a number of individuals. For those development of regional impacts, as well as other cases, we've heard that we're on one fifty-six, um, as being problematic. So if this is potentially gonna add additional, um, congestion there, it, it's one of those items where we would want. I, I think this is one of those areas, we would also point out that, that, that's still a concern of the town, of our town is, is that intersection, because that does impact our residents as well, as many of our residents live on one fifty-six and have to travel, uh, into Raymond to get anywhere else.
Well, if you want to get to Manchester.
I was gonna say, you only have two options, you go to Manchester. You take the windy way through Deerfield, or you go the more direct through.
Go ahead.
Go the windy way. So does anybody else have any other comment that they'd like me to, because I can draft a letter like I've done in the past, uh, on behalf of the board, with our thoughts and comments. Is there anything else anybody wants me to include on, on that? So I'm hearing traffic concerns, fighting.
Mutual aid.
Mutual aid as, as well. I mean, I don't know if our town departments get a chance to chime in on this, if they get these as well, but I would be interested in having this also go to the, uh.
I think it, doesn't it go to the, uh, town mana, the town administrator?
If possible, maybe just check in with the town administrator, see if, if, if we can also, um, that's separate from our process. But it would be, it'd be welcome for them to have a chance to chime in for the police chief and power chief, um, specifically. All right. I didn't see this in my packet. Uh, I pulled everything else out. Alon, did you get a copy of this separately too, the state, the letter from the state? About from the Pataque Way? No?
Oh, no, no, that was, it was addressed to you, that's why.
Yeah, that's okay, and I totally missed it. Um, and I apologize, everybody. So we, I received a letter to me as a chair of the planning board, uh, dated November eighth, um, from the Division of Parks and Recreation. So I'm just gonna reappropriate them. Uh, Division of Parks and Recreation would like to offer to brief the planning board at your convenience about plans to demolish five existing toilet buildings at Pataque Way State Park and replace with five new structures, in addition to adding a new recreational vehicle dump station at the park per RSA six seventy-four fifty-four, colon fifty-four. The division was appropriated for a real funds for this project, and we are planning to begin construction in the fall of two thousand twenty-four. The division has a website dedicated to the project, which contains the project history. NHDParks.org, about NH parks, projects and improvements, current projects, American Rescue Plan Act projects. Sincerely, Brian Wilson, Director. So I would welcome them. Do we have anything on the first meeting in January, scheduled that you can remember?
Just about cutting.
Yeah, city roads, yeah. So I think, I think inviting them to be at that meeting, um, would, would be good, if anybody else agrees. So we, to refresh everybody's mind, the, the, the state had been looking to do some changes at the state park. They had some public meetings in town. Uh, the Pataque Way Lake Improvement Association, uh, took part in that as well, and I think hosted one of them. There was, there was a lot of, I know there's a lot of concern, um, from individuals within town about what some of the proposed plans were, and, and then they pulled the state into pulling back on a number of those. So now what they're proposing, to my understanding, is potentially improving the septic portion of the state park, but, um, again, that's, that's my quick summary.
Re- uh, remodel instead of expansion.
The, the park was built in nineteen fifty-something, or I go on there, and then with the expansions over the years, they've done things. The bathhouses that were on there are old. They needed to be upgraded. It's their busiest state park. The septic system needs to be fixed and redone. They want to accommodate RVs. They were gonna have an RV park, almost, you know, of forty or fifty sites on the water where you could have RVs. That got canceled.
That's what the pushback was, right?
Right, but on top of the hill, when you go into the state park, you were at the new, we call this two parking lots, the old parking lot and the new parking lot. Even though the new parking lot is thirty years old, but it's, uh, it's considered the. uh, it's considered the new paver one. Right up as, as you go, does it, you come up the hill and then it goes down. Up on that hill is where they wanna put the new dumping station. Hence, the reason why is so that when you dump in there, it's easier to hook into the lines, because everything's going downhill, right? So you.
So do they already have a dumping station, or they want to create?
Station. They wanna create a dumping station to attract RVs, longer residents, people coming in, because they do have spots on Horse Island, you can park RV. And there are certain lots out there where you can actually fit an RV, but it's unwelcoming for people to come because the fact that.
They're gonna do short stays.
You, right, exactly. So this would be something where they can come, you know, unload, stay five days and then, you know, and there's a fee involved into it too. Probably not gonna, it's not free.
Oh, no, I'm sure you're gonna get, they're gonna have premium for the RV spots and.
Sure.
You're charged every time you dump.
Absolutely, so, but that's what the um, but they went away from the whole.
I remember there's like twenty-something camping spot and a bunch of, yeah, there's a bunch of sites they were at in.
Yeah, that, that, that whole new road, that whole new construction area is not happening. So basically, this is upgrading.
So I think it would be good if we, and again, I think this is shows a lot of proactiveness on the state's part to reach out to us and, and welcome, you know, come before us and discuss it. Um, because we don't have purview of the state park, you know, the last time we submitted comment for consideration to the state park and our town um representatives and Senator. But um, you know, we don't really have any other control other than that, but what I would recommend is that we offer for them to come in um the first meeting, meeting in January, and as an alternative date, the first meeting in February. That way, we can control what goes on the agenda a little bit. We know we have something on the second meeting in January that potentially could be longer. It's a, you know, continued case. Um.
Would we want us to state to come in and tell us about the project? Just that would you ask us to?
They're welcome to give us, come in and brief us on the, on the.
That's what they're asking, if they can come in and brief us, yeah.
Yeah. Would like to offer to brief the planning board at your convenience about plans, about their plans, so.
Yep, I like that.
I think if, I would look to potentially see if the gym would be open that night, because these meetings, anything on the lake tends to be very well attended. Um.
And you know it's gonna get everybody.
So I would wanna make sure that there's enough room, even if, you know, for, for people to attend and be present.
Considering that, I, I think you'd wanna look at either February and March or later. I think January would be too soon, given the holidays and all of that, that to try and get the gym and get the public awareness that the meeting is happening.
True.
And it gives also time for like the um conservation group and PLEA and stuff to pass the word.
Did they say when we were starting this project?
Yes.
All of two thousand and twenty-four.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying you don't really need to do something right away. It could be February, March, March, April or something. Give groups time to build it.
I normally would say that, that, you know, they do need the time, but to your point, there's ultimately, don't have the purview. It seems more of a courtesy.
Yeah, you know, one, I know one of the bathhouses that they're gonna want, they're gonna re, really revamp is this one that if, if you were going to Niels Cove or the, or the, or the town, uh, excuse me, where the state park beaches, there's a peninsula that goes out there. Well, it used to be all just day campings. Now it's all campsites. And their bathhouse that sits up on the hill there is just toilets and sinks. So there's no showers, there's no nothing. So you know that whole building has to be just completely now to accommodate. Now, they have seventy sites there, sixty sites there, that are all camping sites now, or, you know, so you can't have the people walking all the way a mile, you know, to go to a place for a shower there.
Or you're asking for littering.
Or you're asking to shower in the lake, or who knows what or something. So this is the reason why, you know that bathhouse is being completely redone over and so I'm just saying, just.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Just giving you information for what, what I know.
Yeah, so I guess uh, if we invite them to either of the meetings in February, that way they have, and just ask if they can confirm, so we can um make sure that we can reserve the space. They can confirm ideally by the end of this month.
And also ask if there's anything that we should be posting. Like if there's a one sheet or that they wanna give us that, I know you put stuff on the uh, the website, because we know if we don't post something, you're gonna get a billion emails asking, well, what have they?
What are they talking about?
Sent you. Then you're gonna say.
I'll give this to you after, Alana, as well.
I know Pataque Way is a hot topic.
Yeah, yeah, obviously, it's um you know, individuals on the lake and in town, they put a lot into protecting Pataque Way and caring for it and.
And so you wanna invite inquiries that the uh, Lake Association might already have something lined up with the state for a meeting on what they're doing. So you might wanna just piggyback with what they're doing.
Yeah, and that's them, they can tell us, they tell us there's already a meeting in place and we may defer to that, and then planning board members could attend. Speak. Discussion on amending a site plan review. Um, I know we've had, kicked this along, I think I'd like to make sure that early next year that we get the subdivision regs, site plan review regs, any kind of minor edits, other things, changes on the agenda and move forward with. So I know we have like, you know, this number of applications that are required, those kind of items that to clean up. Um, there's some appendices to clean up. Um I know there was a question, you know, maybe even the, the road, the pre-approved road listing list, that came up the other day. Um, some have already been used, so update that, take some off. See if there's any new additions that should be added from the town. Um, that's, again, that list was created to try to get roads that are what the town residents might want for any new road, as opposed to um developers' names. Anything, anybody else have anything on that? Alana, did you have anything else specific to, to that one? Just trying. So um I'll try to touch base with Alana and Blair to see if we, what list we have, kind of running for, for items on that, so we can get something on the agenda and something more concrete to um, to get those updated. Any other discuss, discussion with the board, anything on that they wanna see, or wanna make sure we can.
No, I think along those lines, and I know we haven't really talked about it a lot, but I.
Oh, yes.
Joning, is there anything that people feel is hot and pressing? Cause I'm looking at the calendar, we're actually gonna be in kind of a tight here to hit our deadlines. I know we kinda worked a lot, I know we've always kinda running lists, but I know we got like the stream protection ordinance in last couple of years.
Yeah, we ticked off a lot of things.
There was a list going around, but I know there, some of the other ones, I think we kinda determined, okay, they weren't pressing issues with, you know, repeat applications.
Right, you get the one-off, kind of weird things that.
Right.
That.
And we can't design our ordinance for that.
Right, yeah.
I do remember that um for other, the, the discussion on amending the site plan review, um, that's on there because of a case that we had previously that seems to maybe have changed the plans that the planning board agreed on. And I think, um, I don't know if you wanted to discuss what, you know, when an amendment is necessary?
Yeah, I think we can, we don't have to be case specific, but it was, you know, it was spurred by a previous case that's ongoing right now, and I know Dale's involved. Um, and it kind of brought up, I know, and for me, a general question of, I don't think, I, I didn't look through every word of it, but I don't think we have a hard and fast requirement for like as-built surveys of site plans.
Oh, as-built.
So the issue usually comes down to like commercial site plans where you're, you know, we're, those are the ones where we're stringent on lot coverage, limits of impervious, that kind of thing. Um, is that I don't think we require as-built surveys of uh, commercial site plans. That's usually the easiest way, and I think what I've heard is that Dale doesn't always, you know, he can pace things off, but I mean, again, he's using a plan, looking at what's there on the ground and like, again, it's usually by eye, or he doesn't have the time to tape everything off and try and check it himself. A lot of towns do put a burden back on the applicant that if you're developing a commercial site, and actually nowadays, a lot of towns are actually requiring it for the roadway portion of a subdivision. They don't require as-bills on like the individual house lots, but, you know, especially these roads where it's being designed to a town standard, is the town actually requires an as-built of that road prior to releasing the bond, and it acts as an avenue that going forward, the town has.
You wanna clarify what an as-belt means?
Yeah, so an as-built survey is.
Cause most people probably have no idea what you're talking about, as-belt.
I'm trying to track.
Yeah, so an as-built survey is something, you essentially construct a project ver, via the proposed plans. Um, roadway, pavement, utilities, fills, cuts. Um, you essentially construct what is fully on those plans, and then you actually have to have a surveyor come back out. And usually they go and resurvey the selected area. Um, if it's, say, a roadway, they don't have to resurvey the whole lot, they just resurvey the roadway portion of the project. And essentially what they can then do is they prepare a plan, it's gonna show elevations, limits of pavement, utilities that they pick up. A lot of times, the contractor will, they're usually via the notes on the plan, they're required to track any underground utilities, so they can be shown on that plan. Then you can take that plan and put it next to the proposed plan and you say, oh, whoa, that is way longer. You basically confirm that it meets the plan, and I think the issue that we see sometimes is even little changes, if you expand pavement by ten, twenty feet, that's hard to pick up by eye or some, Dale has a lot to deal with. He's not going around pacing off and taping off every single site plan. But adding pavement to a site might have changed how we looked at the stormwater design or something like that on the project, so.
So you're saying they build it and then they resurvey it?
Yeah, and it's not uncommon, a lot, meant most, a lot of towns require it, and we're seeing, I'm seeing more towns require it for like subdivision roads. It's very common for commercial site plans, where there are very complicated limits of pavement, that kind of thing.
So it's just making sure they did what they said they were gonna do?
Correct, and it's, it's a burden on the applicant, but it actually oftentimes protects the applicant, because they can also see, oh, it was built to, you know, my contractor built what I contracted them to build.
Okay.
But it's one of those things where town with limited resources, I mean, we don't have the technical staff that we can afford slash wanna put the burden on them to have to go out and do those detailed walks, tape everything off. It, it really shouldn't be on the town, especially since there's no fee paid for that, right? There's no compensation of time. Um, the alternative to requiring like an as-built survey is, and I don't think we even do this to a degree, is oftentimes um you might say that town's contracted engineer, in this case it would be CMA, is required to review a site. We don't do that.
So when the project is done.
It's just, I don't think it needs done.
So just to be in layman's terms, to make this, no offense, but, when the project is done, a surveyor comes back in. You know, the road's already paved, the house lots are already there, the surveyor comes in and gives the final okay and says, this is what it is. So that if it's not, they're gonna have to rip it up and change it and go back to the original plan. Or they're going to, like, what's the outcome?
So. Of this. It's to verify that they built it the way we approved it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but what happens if they did?
Then, just like a, just like a building inspector, if you build your house the way you, you know, you're not supposed to, that you have to, well, I mean, the remedies.
There's multiple remedies.
Multiple remedies. The most egregious is tear it down and do it again, right? That's the most egregious. Sometimes there are ways to bring it in compliance without something like that. But essentially, that's what this as-built, it's, show me how it was built, as it's been built, is kind of how it's.
And it's, so it's like in the case of, say, somebody puts in a parking lot, and then we approve it a certain dimension, but then it turns out that they built it twice as large.
So what I'm trying to get is, so you got your, before the first house is done, the road's actually already in, the hard gravel's already down, you know, they haven't paved yet, because they're gonna drive trucks all over. But from the, how that level and everything's on there, that's when the surveyor should go in to say, okay, the road does fit in that area, it is the fifty feet wide, or it's what, what needs, it is on the grade that it's supposed to be, before they hence move on to the next stage of paving?
So usually.
Or is this, or is this guy coming at the way in before we sign my hours and say, hey, listen?
No, so usually, usually like, so we'll, we'll, we'll approve.
Is this gonna be more complex for us, or is this gonna be easier for us?
It's, it's actually, it's no additional burden on us. It's a burden on the applicant, but it's not an uncommon burden. If you asked every developer that came to this town, I guarantee they've had to do this in other towns.
I believe technically we'd go back to the building inspector code enforcement at that point, and technically, we actually do require in our subdivision site plan review regulations.
So we do, so that, I mean, maybe that's one thing, so if we haven't, shall require as-built plans.
So there's a mul, but a bunch of areas in there, so it might be something, again, sometimes there's parts that we don't mean to overlook, but we may not see. We hadn't had a lot of site plan applications come in for a very long time, so then we, you know, now we've had a few in front of us. Same thing with new roads, it's been a while since we had a new road permitted, and then when you get a new road, you know, there's the performance guarantee and bond that.
Yeah, and if we get that one.
Sometimes we, we um, you know, we may forget about, but they still, the burden is technically still on, probably on the applicant to do, so.
Also, you have to remember too, when somebody develops a road and builds it, it is their, it's essentially their road until any time that the H, I think you have to I think you have to have issued over fifty percent of your building permits on that road for it to be turned over, like for the HOA to become active. Um.
But we also hold a bond on there too, so even if the surveyor comes out at the end and says, you didn't do it right, they're not getting their money.
Right.
Cause we have a bond on it.
Correct, and usually, so part of it too, is you'll see cases where something's phased.
So it's certain things, why are we requesting it now, or just we've overlooked it?
It sounds like it's partially an oversight that maybe we're, we should be asking for it, or, and I don't know who that falls on, to be honest. Um.
Good question.
But to your point in terms of timing, you actually, I believe our requirements usually, you actually have to build that road and have base pavement in before you're allowed to issue a COO. So you can start building a house before the road's paved, but you have to have base pavement down, at least a pair of regs before you can do that. So like usually, an as-built survey, if you have a good surveyor, they're setting monuments and they might go grab some finished areas, but they come back like when base pavement's down, and that's what they're surveying, and then you can tell pretty quick if it's gonna match what the plan is.
So where this is coming up, and I've had a couple of questions to me, so where this comes up is, obviously, once we get final approval and we sign off on plans, at that point, it's no longer our purview unless it gets kicked back to us. So there's a conditional approval and they wanna do something, but we don't sign it, so that come back to us, they wanna change the site plan, amend the site plan, it comes back to us. Everywhere else, it ends up becoming the responsibility or burden, whichever you wanna phrase it, of a different department, usually code enforcement, building inspector, so um so having things like as-built plans, it's putting stuff back on an applicant, and if we do require it, it might not be being done, but it puts responsibility back on the applicant to say, this is what we drew and designed with our engineering and had all these nice things out. This is what was actually built, it matches up.
And they have to come back to us for that?
Nope.
No, code enforcement.
It'd go back to the code enforcement officer.
But the, the whole point is.
If there's a change and there's something different there, still then, that still not, doesn't necessarily come back to us. It's gonna be a legal process. If, you know, it's like building a house, max size is thirty-four feet, they build it forty feet, that's not coming back before us, it's, that's gonna be an issue between.
It's a legal issue at that point.
The builder, but the, the code enforcement could withhold a CL, would be my guess in that case.
And it's, the as-built is the, the, the avenue, that if we see something and we all drive around town, if we see a site plan that's approved and we say, hey, that doesn't look like, if I look at a plan, like, I can just tell that things aren't where the plan showed them, or they think something expanded. If we start questioning it and the applicant says, well, no, we did build it, it's like, well, well, how do we know? And so, you know, we, so we do have eleven point seven requiring as-built plans.
That's a beautiful response, yeah.
Unfortunately, at that point, it's, you know, it's gonna be a he said, she said, kind of stalemate. Bond might not get released until there's something, and it's kind of our job to like monitor and make sure that something is.
And we have separate, so we talked about as-built a number of times. Another spot is the miscellaneous road design and construction procedures. Uh, inspections, sub item of inspections for the road, it seems like, is as-built plans shall be maintained on a daily basis, weekly inspections will be conducted.
And yet the, those are milestones for inspections that usually CMA does. I have no idea if they're doing those on the roads being built right now.
And then we have a definition of a two.
So it sounds like, I think, I think we.
So we might need to update the definition, because as-built drawings is defined as drawings which will delineate the specific location of site utilities and roadways upon completion of construction.
Correct, so it applies really to subdivision, that's about it.
Well, and to.
Engines.
Roads and utilities is, is to what we, how.
I think the benefit there is eleven point seven was vague enough, saying as-built certain plans need to be provided. So I think maybe the particular case that we have in town, maybe we need to just direct Dale to that, that, that seems like, because it, it's, it's in his court now.
So, so this comes back to, we had a couple of questions from like the building inspector over time, is, is to have us consider and, and again, just to provide him with guidance, uh, that position with guidance, is what triggers a site plan review, so.
Or an amendment to approve.
Or an amendment to a site, a, a, an approved plan. Um, so make sure we kinda. Or an amendment to a site, a, a, an approved plan, um, so make sure we kind of, or understand what we think about that, you know? Is it a, um, is it a site that was approved as a, as an approved commercial space and they add a, um, I can't think, they add a, a shed or a storage shed or something like that, but that wasn't on the plan? You know, does that have to come back to us, or is it go, was that considered something that would, just as long as it's within zoning, i- i- if it's and doesn't need to come back? Or is it any kind of expansion, so, you know, if it's a parking area and we have, we might have approved waivers or something like that for a specific type of parking area and based on the size and what was being proposed, but if the size changes and increases, um, or the parking type, surface type changes, does that trigger it back to us? You know, is that considered a substantive change?
Maybe we should have a meeting with Dale? Maybe ask him what the process is and what happened with the past ones, that we can get an idea?
If he wants, I mean, it sounds like he's.
Well, I think, I think he's deferring to us quite a bit, to, 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 um, you know, see, you know, he'll, he'll do kind of what the town expects, i- it's just trying to give him that guidance of saying, yeah, these are areas where, you know, if something changed in scope or size, um, in a minute's plan, it should come before us or.
So I think part of this is not spelled out in our ordinance, you know, what, what triggers the requirement for an amendment? And many towns that have town plan, like full-time town planners that are employed directly by the town itself, they actually can build in, the RSAs allow it, there's certain thresholds they can determine if, you know, there's, you know, say, they can approve up to a thousand feet or a thousand square feet of additional impervious, um, or a percentage of what was previously approved. We don't, you know, even with SRPC as a contract planner, I think the difference there is, you know, they're not a direct employee of the town. And I don't think we want to get, you know, right now where we don't have any requirements, technically any change from a site plan warrants an amendment.
Well, how many have we seen over the past three, four years?
A few. I think the problem is, we know that there's potential for additional, I mean, we've had conceptuals and active applications and they're bigger projects than I think what we've seen, so the bigger ones are the ones you really want to make sure are being built per the plans. But I think, you know, particularly my, my feeling is that if somebody submits us a commercial site plan that details out every little thing they're doing, but then after the fact goes and requests a permit for a shed, which, you know, the town has its own requirements on, you can just pull a permit for a shed and don't need to come to the planning board, but that falls within the footprint of a commercial site plan, that technically it's just like putting a dumpster on the plan, we're supposed, they're supposed to show where a dumpster goes, and a shed is bigger than the dumpster, so show us when there's a shed on the plan. So where we don't specifically say what triggers an amendment, it's one of the, it's similar, it's technically any, any change is an amendment.
So how do you write that, anything?
I think it's a good thing for us to.
If the tree's in the wrong spot, is, I mean, is that because we asked for, bushes aren't put in the right, is that gonna trigger the thing?
That's a good point, like sometimes where we have, if we said, hey, we really.
And I'm not trying to get this conversation any longer than where it's, but I'm saying that.
That's another reason for the as-built, right? Is it says, here's.
Well, I mean, there's so many variations to this, I mean, you were, I mean, should it be dealt with on a case by case, we had to get another line to our zoning ordinances or planning board or this, and then to not be specific about exactly what we're looking for and we keep it vague, opens us up to more interpretation, more discuss, and it, it's even tougher for the applicant to deal with because we're not even being specific to them. And that's where I'm getting with the comment, not to comment, but I understand where you're going with your conversation, but I'm trying to sit there on the other side and say, well, what is it?
Well, I think with Dale, I think what, in theory, where we don't say, we don't say what triggers an amendment, what threshold is, that any change is an amendment, that Dale then should be saying, hey, you're in violation, you need to submit a site plan for the amendment, and that's, then he pushes it back.
So there's that, that is that possi- possibility, so we're not recreating the wheels, this is just more of like trying to get the.
Procedure.
Our thoughts going on it as we look to potentially update this. But again, these site plan, site plan re-regulations and updates and amendments, every town has them, every town does them, so we would try to look at maybe adding some language and clarifying language to help guide our town staff, you know, in, in their processes, so they're not left in like this gray area, so.
But getting back to, I'm gonna quickly go back to trying to visit, why aren't we having this direct conversation with Dale? Because since he's the one that's gonna see it, asking what he thinks we should do and how we should do it, because again, we can second guess this a hundred million times, but he's most likely the one that's going to see or has seen. This is maybe the way I would have it, or this the way I would do it, and this should cover eighty percent of the basis of the things that happen.
Yeah, I'm fine with reaching out to him and see if he wants to chime in on that, I think he's gonna defer back to us a bit in that.
Of, well, yeah, we have the final say, but I'm just saying.
I was gonna say, you know, Blair, if, if, if you've come across some other towns, but, you know, um, otherwise we can definitely put it on an agenda for, for one of our, make sure that that's one of the clarification areas that we look at for when we do revise these.
Yeah, didn't I send you guys an application for one town's amendment to a decision?
Yes.
I wish I could find that right now, that would help.
Because we didn't, we don't have an application.
We don't even, yeah, it was just, someone has to just show up, and it's also, do you have to advertise it?
Well, that's the thing, the only alternative is you file a site plan again.
Yeah, so a couple of things, one, um, having, I understand what your point is, having it vague is, it's not that bad, because right now there's so much that's already up to interpretation about how a zoning ordinance operates, that to have this be up to open to some interpretation isn't that bad, but I understand what you're saying, you, you want as much clarity as possible. Um, so, you know, if you decide to do something, I guess, as, uh, Incu's pointing out is that right now they have to come before us, no matter what they do, if they move something a millimeter over here, technically they need to come before, back before you guys. So even if you give some discretion, uh, to someone to make administrative decisions, you know, that's, that happens, that, that does exist out there.
Well, this also goes back to, again, bringing the as-built, where it sounds like we haven't, it's not really something we've been like on top of, is that an as-built, a lot of times, you'd be like, ah, the pavement is, you know, it shifted, everything shifted a foot this way. But if in general, it's all the same areas and all that.
But I got a question for you, so again, not to, how do we know it's not? I've never seen an as-built, have I? I don't recall seeing one after the plan's already been done, but has Dale?
I don't, I'll follow up with them.
I mean, so, so we're saying, maybe it's already, maybe that process has already been going. Maybe Dale has already asked them to have an as-built. Because it says in the other things.
The current case, I know there hasn't been an as-built because Dale would be able to lay them on top of each other, but, you know, some of the, um, subdivisions that have been built in the last five, ten years, they technically would have fallen under that and required them, so.
And again, but since, nothing, once we've done our part, we don't see the second half of it, we're asking, I mean, are we really asking the question? Do we want to see it from the applicant that they did do it? Or are we just talking about it?
Well, that's the thing, it, ultimately, everything goes back to, we're the volunteer board, we do require our as-built, the burden's on the applicant to prove that they've met the conditions, and it's also not common, like, we're not gonna be asking Dale to review a detailed subdivision as-built plan versus the design plan. It is very common to require, like, CMA to review that plan as part of their peer review, they already are supposed to inspect certain elements of the road, the site.
But are you questioning whether they do now or they don't? Because I don't know if they do or they don't.
I'll follow up internally with that.
Both, I don't know if they do now, they should.
Before we get to more of the conversation and moving the meeting along, maybe we should get that question answered.
Well, one of the, one of the is, I, I wanted to ask, if Dale does sign off on someone's plans and, and, and they're able to get their CO, and then that applicant, that person comes back a month later and wants to put that shed up, a shed just requires, do you, a, a building permit or something?
Depends on the side shed.
What's that?
Depends on the side, I mean, again, there's another.
Yeah, but the point is, did you consider that, because they've already received their CO, do you kind of consider their site plan behind them and now they're into this next?
If they got a CEO, their site plan is done.
I consider it an amendment, an amendment to a, a, a pre-approved site plan, so that's, that's where you get into that weeds of it.
That's also why commercial site plan, if you're under a site plan, you kind of are held to a higher standard, you're not somebody with a single family home and not to say that people with single family homes don't do plenty of violations, but it's, there's a certain level of, um, critique that we place on commercial site plans, which is why we have the site plan regulations.
But again, we don't, we don't have that many commercials.
Correct, but I think we've seen an uptick, if you looked at a chart, it's probably been a very slow uptick, so I think there is a case where right now we could ask Dale.
Yeah.
Uh, or somebody, there's the Mitchell Road subdivision, which is under construction, we should ask, is CMA actually on board? So that's, that would answer the first question, is, are we even following that part?
I'll follow up with Dale on that, on that, to check in.
And I think just point him to eleven point seven on as-bills, let him run with that, he can request it.
Mr. Chair, can I respectfully request we move on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Doing so, I'm gonna follow up with Dale on these, brings attention to those items and just check in on that, so. Based on some of that, that might be looking at additional garbage, um, another item that's not on the agenda, we received a request, uh, from an individual looking for their escrow to be released for Maple Ridge, Maple Ridge project. Um, we do have in our site plan or subdivision regulations, kind of that process outlined of how long it has to be held on to, um, and then has to be signed and reviewed and signed off on, so it's been a while since we've had a request to release any, um, so I had to refresh my memory on, on that process, but basically, if it's met the timeline and all the criteria, it then sell us to get signed off on, it's either gonna be by road agent, building inspector and/or our engineering, the engineering department, and then I think we can make a request to the board selectman, but the select board actually controls the, would be the one that can actually release the funds. But in the past, I believe it's.
In the regulations, it says that?
In the regulations, it talks about the, the release of the performance guarantee or bond, um, in the past, it has come before us board, we've usually made a motion, and then it goes to the select board to be the one that actually is, yeah, because.
They have the signature of the board.
They have the signing authority, yeah, we don't. Next on the item, public comment, nobody's here tonight, we always reserve this time for people to come in and talk to us about things, um, so stress to stay welcoming, uh, approval of minutes, we have one set of minutes from November eighth, twenty twenty-three, um. I know, did you, Ms. Mooney, you said you had made some changes to these, do we want to do these tonight or, or, um, I don't know how many changes you're gonna have that aren't reflective in.
Um, I have two very minor ones, and then the third, just inserting a word.
Okay.
And then I looked and on line sixty-one through sixty-three, I, well, actually sixty-one, sixty-two, I just didn't feel that first sentence. I, I'm sorry, Alana, I only looked at them tonight, I apologize, but I didn't think the first sentence there, Ms. Mooney suggested that fire sprinklers could potentially decrease due to reduced house insurance premiums, that didn't read right to me. Maybe it's just because I'm tired.
Initially, I had done that, but I don't think it, it got, um, changed, so let me read what initially I had. Mrs. Mooney suggested that fire sprinklers could potentially decrease the cost of insurance for the homeowners due to reduced house insurance premiums, that's what I had as a correction, but it didn't come through.
Okay.
Okay, so I can just give this to Elena.
You want to read in your other edits?
Um, on line sixty-three, change help to assist. On lines ninety, ninety-one, move in lieu of a cistern to come in after install sprinkler systems. So it reads, Mrs. Mooney made the motion that the board allow the applicant to install sprinkler systems in lieu of a cistern, blah, blah, blah.
You're swapping the wording there.
Yeah, but it gives a progression in the sentence.
I agree with that.
And then the last was just inserting a word on line two seventeen. The BOS has also decided to rent out space.
And what's the line two twenty there? That, that D E L, the board membership?
Oh, that should have been, that should have been deleted.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I'll circle that, Elena, I didn't catch that either.
What line was that?
One twenty, I'm sorry, two twenty?
Yeah.
Delete that, I'll just give you my hide copy. That might be.
Can I make your corrections?
Well, we, we can't all be A plus.
And then line two hundred, I think, was one, uh, that. So this was an item where we had inserted some, uh, hyperlinks into the, into the minutes, um, but the question was that those links could go invalid at any moment, so my suggestion was that we, um, pull those out of the minutes and instead just indicate that the, um, the files or the items are, are on record in the, should we say land use office instead of business office?
Yes.
Yep.
So what, what are you deleting, Ed?
I'm, I'm deleting the word business and changing it to land use.
Okay.
And I don't know if that's always the key, well, if we delete, if we actually download the files or not, but, um, but yes, I think that.
I'll move to approve the minutes of eleven eight as amended.
Second.
So motion by Mrs. Vascom, second by, uh, Mr. Davies, to approve the minutes of eleven eight as amended, any further discussion? All's a favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, that means carry seven zero, select board member updates, Mr. Davies.
No.
Mrs. Vascom?
Yeah.
Mr. Warren, you've been busy.
Budget, but we'll be in front of the, uh, budget committee tomorrow night, I'll be there, and we are proposing our four percent budget. Uh, have a, at the four percent budget, we had to make about plus of four hundred thousand dollars with cuts off the first initial budget that came in through all the, um, all the departments, but we got it down to the fourth, so we're pretty happy about that. And we'll see what happens after it goes to the budget, and we will have a couple of warrant articles.
I'll need a couple?
Uh, it's actually not as bad as you think.
I'm just, I was, I was honestly asking.
Oh, yeah, it's not, I'm, we're gonna have warrant articles, there, a lot of the same warrant articles over there last year are gonna be there again this year.
Yeah, you're saying, just like, no drastic increase from the town's warrant articles.
Right, yeah, yeah, our, yeah, for.
We still have like.
But we haven't seen petition articles, we haven't seen any of that stuff, but our.
Until January fifth.
We're gonna, the town's gonna be putting in there as warrant articles, it's pretty much gonna be status quo, with just a couple of things.
To make up for the fact that there's a cap and things need to be changed, or?
Well, the biggest thing, well, like we did from last year, we took the road and sealed it, uh, and we put that, it's all gonna be a warrant article.
Alana, did you have to print out of the, the cap?
So town votes now?
Down off first.
Do it long enough, we're hoping.
Paying the direct.
Just shut this down, I'll try and pull it up and read it off to everybody, Mr. McKinnon, while I'm rebooting.
Um, I don't know.
I'll defer for a moment, Ms. Mooney.
Okay, I have not forgotten to do an update on the transportation subcommittee lettered to the BOS. Still on my list, sometimes it falls down, but it's back up at the top along with Christmas cards. And this is a, a non-update announcement, but the, um, Gemini shower is on tonight, and if it's good, it's up to seventy-five shooting stars an hour, so look out.
I think that's why we had that big, long discussion, because it's supposed to start in ten minutes, so.
Oh, is that right?
I think that was the motivation behind that, so when we leave, we say.
Put your hat, wear your jacket on.
I've got nothing, Ed.
Better minder, but.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Uh, Friday, there's a, the commissioners are starting to do tours and meetings outs, the SRPC commissioners are starting to do tours and meetings outside of our building, and they're starting with a tour of UNH and some of the improvements they've made at their university, um, and the first one will be this Friday. If you're interested, so, um, just let Jen know.
Yeah.
The last, so the only thing I had for us is, um, obviously I know it's been a busy season for everybody, um, especially the select board and budget committees and everything else, so appreciate everybody's time, um, on that. Alana did, was graceful enough to, uh, put together a proposed twenty twenty-four Nottingham Planning Board, um, or, uh, schedule for us. Uh, my fault for not having this, um. My fault for not having this, um, here tonight, but I can read off some dates to everybody we've kinda looked at, Blair's looked at it.
Always amend in the future too.
So I, I just recommend that we potentially accept this proposed calendar, so that, since the date's already into the, under the dates we're on.
What's our, what's our election? Do we have that set in March, our election date?
I don't know, it, that's, if you're asking me for that, I don't have the date, I'll, I'll.
Wasn't there an issue one year where we, the first meeting in March was actually two close?
Yeah, just make sure that we know who's running and who's not running, what position's over for the planning board, and.
The, um.
Cause I know we're, we're down one, two, down.
One.
No, we're just down one, down one, so that, so there'll be, potentially, if, I have to remember the vacant spot, I don't know what, where they were in their term, but if there'll have to be a position for it, for.
First Tuesday or is it? First Tuesday is the.
Tues- uh, Tuesday, March fifth, annual town report and final budget ballot, so.
What day was that?
Saying, hang on a sec, that's complete.
Oh, you're looking at the timeline, I'm looking at the.
This, the election.
Yeah, so Tuesday, March twelfth is the second session of the annual meeting to elect officers, uh, this doesn't have the town.
Yeah, probably. So is that gonna be an issue of election of officers, no business?
It's in February.
That's too tight, right?
Seventeen?
So, so to Mr. McKenon's point, I think he's right, so it's, for, the, the only date I see on here that could be a potential issue is, um, March thirteenth, because town election's March twelfth, so technically.
The twelfth, the second, the second Tuesday in the month? Okay, I thought it was the first, but I don't know for certain.
It's the second session of annual meeting to elect officers. We vote on all Warner, yeah, I think the first is deliberative session? I don't know.
It's probably on our town calendar on the website.
So we can always amend this, I just thought it'd be good to get the twenty twenty-four calendar published, um, for at least the, the first few meetings, we can always amend it if it's incorrect, but our dates would be January tenth, twenty-fourth, February fourteenth and twenty-eighth, potentially March thirteenth, twenty-seventh, April tenth, twenty-fourth, May eighth, twenty-second, June twelfth, twenty-sixth, July tenth and twenty-fourth, August fourteenth and twenty-eighth, September eleventh and twenty-fifth, October ninth and twenty-third, November thirteenth, December eleventh, so just individual meetings, and then the two January meetings, and, and then obviously the application deadlines following our, our set. Uh, August twenty-eighth meeting being, um, defined on our calendar as a joint meeting with no regular business, so it's just to keep the calendar hold over for, for us to have that, so it's easier to remember to do.
Okay.
Um, again, there's no real problem, if we approve this, we can always amend it at any meeting, but, um, I thought it'd be good to just get it published online.
Move to approve the calendar proposed for twenty twenty-four.
A second?
A motion by Mrs. Bascom, a second by Ms. Mooney, to approve the, uh, twenty twenty-four Nottingham Planning Board public hearing application deadline schedule, any further discussion? All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All's opposed, motion carries seven zero.
So this is.
Any other business from anybody? Someone wants Alana anything?
Well, that would be it, cause the elections.
All right.
Will you turn?
Thank you, everybody.
Bye.
Not go on the town.
Give me a second. See ya, fellas.